I'd like to call this June 18 meeting of the Cookville City Council to order, please. Can we have a roll call?
Councilman Anderson?
Present.
Councilman Shelton?
Here.
Mayor Salee?
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Present.
Councilman Williams?
Present.
All present.
We could all rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda, Mr. Shipley?
No changes.
Seeing no changes, do we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Have our motion or second. All vote.
Obvious votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Brings us to our old business portion of the meeting. Several items here. Item two, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held June the 4th, 2009. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
It wasn't here.
So move.
Second.
We have our motion in second. Do we have any comments from the council? Seeing no comments, all vote.
Obvious votes, motion carries.
Item three, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 090405, rezoning 156, 164, and 168 Stout Street and a portion of 349 Fouts Drive from RD, which is a single family and duplex residential to CL Local Commercial, sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the location of this property is depicted upon the screen. This ordinance was approved on first reading at the May 7th meeting of the council. Final reading was postponed at the request of the petitioner, Mr. Justin Cumbie, to allow him to place restrictions on the properties limiting them to residential use. These restrictions have now been set. The planning commission is recommending for approval of the rezoning. The planning department concurs for this recommendation. We've received no calls or comments since first reading.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and second to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
We have our motion and second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no comments, all vote.
Obvious votes, motion carries.
Item four, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 090506, amendments to the zoning code regarding the storage of vehicles, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance amends the zoning code to establish a new use classification entitled vehicle storage lots and create specific standards for such uses. Those standards are depicted upon the screen. Vehicle storage lots would be permitted in the HM, LM, and CI districts. The proposed amendments have been approved by the planning commission or recommended by the planning department, and we've received no calls or comments since first reading.
All right. Do we have a motion and second to approve on second reading?
So move.
Second.
Have our motion and second. Any discussion by the council?
Have we been having a lot of problems with this type of thing?
No, but over the past couple of years, we've had several requests for this type of use, and under our current zoning code, you can have no more than 10 vehicles being stored at any one location, and this would allow a larger number to be stored, provided they meet the standards that we specify, which include they can't be wrecked and they must be operable.
And they have to have the current registration, correct?
Yes.
And they can't be stored for more than 30 days?
Well, if they have current tags and current registration, they can be stored indefinitely.
I thought it was 60 days.
It's 60 with, you can, 60 is without the tags or the, but you can have long-term storage provided you do have tags and registration.
Well, you need to, for somebody to be able to store more than 60 days under this provision, there's a lot they have to do to their parking lot. I mean, it has to look like a parking lot. It has to be paved and striped and...
Well, that's just one of the many...
Yeah. I mean, somebody's going to store junk vehicles. They're not going to spend this kind of money to do that.
This doesn't apply to junk vehicles. There's no junk vehicles allowed in this, under this. Junk vehicles are either allowed, are only allowed in the HM zone or LM as special exceptions, or you must have 10 or less, for example, if you're at an auto repair shop. The most you can have is 10 at any one location. They have to be screened, but that's now a separate use from this. This is for operable vehicles, like RVs, boats, or if you have, you want to store a car at some location. It's also, for example, for repossession lots, where cars have been repoed and banks have to have them stored somewhere. This is a low, this will fall under this classification now.
Okay. Very good. Any further comments or questions from the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Obvious votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item five, consider on second and final reading, 090612, amending Title 18, chapters 1 and 2 of the Cookville Municipal Code relative to water sewer rate increases, sponsor Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we completed the rate structure study recently and have recommended a stepped in, staggered in rate increase, and we'll go over a little bit. The proposed rate structure recommendations, basically, we went to a base charge instead of a, currently, we're at a flat rate that gets you the first 2,000 gallons. We wanted to change that to a, just to a base charge that took care of meter reading, customer service, and then go to a, basically, a volumetric charge. This would help promote maybe some conservation and people being a little bit more aware of how much water they're using. We're going to keep our main, our base charge the first year to 255 per thousand. It's going to basically help us rebuild and build our reserve fund to keep that in the proper range. It's also going to allow us to bank some reserves for future plant expansion, and we also included in there the water storage fee of two cents, an increase of two cents because of the Corps of Engineers dam repair bill that in about 2014, we're going to owe the Corps of Engineers about 1 point, I think it's 1.4 million. The other, the sewer rate increase, we're going to maintain the current base charge. We're raising the, recommending raising the first year up to $3.43 on the volumetric We were looking at, the parameters we looked at was, we're trying to obtain 3.5 million dollar loan from the SRF fund, which will have some stimulus money in there, and Hudgens Creek, and then there's a big southeast sewer project. So those parameters and the other sewer projects we've got sort of went into calculating what these rates should be over the next few years. Let me go on. This is our current rates and our rate structure, and as you see here at the, we will, we're adequately funded in the water department for next year. We're about right on course for the next year, but we sort of underfunded here when you start getting into some of the water plant expansion that we feel will take place. When you kick in the proposed rate structure, you're going to build some reserves here, get your rate structure up to where you can fund those, and pay as you go on that water plant as we go. Sewer, same way, there's some sewer projects currently, if we did a pay-as-you-go system, there's not enough funds to generate it to take care of those sewer projects. One of those sewer projects is a mandated project in an annexation that we're required to have sewer service in by 2015. The other project is a, is the Hudgens Creek project. It's a replacement of a pump station, and it will allow the new business park to be able to be pumped in wastewater over to this line. That's the two big projects in the sewer facilities. With the rate increase in the SRF portion, borrowing some money for that project, we can gradually bring this up, but you're still going to have to get it up to this level, whether you go, if we didn't get the money, you're going to bring it up quickly to get to that level to fund these projects. If we can borrow the SRF money and get some stimulus money in there, you can gradually bring it up. Like I said, one of the biggest drivers of the sewer rate increase is this southeast annexation that's required to have sewer service by the year 2015. So that's a pretty big driver coming up in the near future. Here's your projected monthly water bills. I'll just flip, if you want me to stop right here real quick, I can, or I'm going to go on to another chart I developed just to go over those. The affordability of the rates, we had the rates consultant look at, EPA has an affordability index, threshold of what's affordable and what's not affordable in a community in your water sewer rates. I think this is the worst case pay-as-you-go option, which was bringing your sewer rates up dramatically at first, and that's not what we're recommending, but even if you use that as a criteria, the percentage of the median household income is only 1.7%. EPA says if you're under 4%, you're good. If you get off, start getting over 4%, it becomes a, maybe an issue with households. Here's the breakdown of customers, residential, what I did, I broke down the residential customers inside the city limits. There's eight, about 9,000 customers. The average residential customer inside the city uses 4,434 gallons a month. Their bill, current bill's 1236. The first year increase, it'd go to 1465. That's an increase of $2.29 a month. What I did after that was to sort of break down those residential customers to see the zero gallons, 547 zero gallon users in the month of April, 1,000 gallon users is 878, but the bulk of our users are in, from 1,000 gallons down to about 6,000 gallons, then it drops off. I broke down the commercial, there's a commercial inside the city, there's 1,600 commercial customers. Their average usage is 20,400 gallons a month. Their bill's 5580. Can't see that far. Let's see.
You want some help?
No, it's 5580 a month, and then it goes to 5849, which is a $2.69 a month increase in the water for a commercial. The institutional, they're a big, they're 61,000 gallon a user. Their increase is about $3.51 a month. The industrials are a little bit bigger. They're about 100,000 gallon a user a month. There's 68 of those of our customers that are considered industrial. Their increase is about $4.27 a month. When you look at the sewer, you can see where, it's the same breakdown, the majority of the bigger, bigger customers are in that same bracket, 2,000 to about 6,000. Thousand gallon user, their bill will go up 38 cents, a 2,000 gallon, 76 a month on the first year. Now, what I did, that, since newspaper article, there was the example about 8,000 gallon user, so I took that 8,000 gallon per month user, and your current bill's $23.16 a month. Your first year bill, if the increase passes, will be 2561, which is an increase of $2.45. Your sewer bill's 2990 a month currently. It would go to 3294, which is an increase of $3.04 a month, which is a total increase of $5.49 a month if you're a water and sewer customer, which equals $65.88 a year in the first year. The second year of the proposed increase, you go, your bill would go to 20, from 2561 to 2755. That's an increase of $1.94 from the previous year. Your sewer would go from 3294 to 3638, which is an increase of $3.44. Sewer's the driver, it's the one that's got to be driven the highest, and you can see it on this chart that we're having to keep that rate up, but after you get up to about this point, sewer's going to level off. And then here's the breakdown. We're still pretty good. Here we are currently. This is current before you change any rates. Now, you can, and it's $15 a month for a 5,000 gallon user, you can take about a, it's, I think it's 85 cents. You can take almost a dollar out of there because that's just a Corps of Engineer. Most of these people don't have a Corps of Engineer fee attached, so it, to normalize that, some earn and Murfreesboro do, does, but the rest of them don't, so if you try to normalize this back to what everybody else cost to cost, you know, they don't have that cost, but the first year, it would, we're going to jump to this position, but also, everybody else is going to be jumping also. They do every year. We kept, we kept this, we keep it every year. Allen and Hoshel does it every year across the state. There's usually 200 or 300. This one, there was 243 water systems surveyed. We were the 34th lowest in 2008, and that's sort of historically where we've been over time as we go along. We may add increase here, but everybody else is either increasing too. Sewer, same way. There was 148 systems surveyed. We were the 51, 51st lowest. And you can see where we're, where we are. I think that's where I want to stop right now.
All right. Thank you, Ronnie.
See what we got.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve on second reading?
No.
We have our motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Thank you for your presentation, Ronnie, on clarification on some of those numbers and that sort of thing. I hope that answered some questions that we were having.
So the money, the projects that, the main one you're talking about is the southeast that's mandated when it was annexed to be in 2015, right?
Be sewed by 2015.
And that's what's driving that predominant, first part of this increase at least, right?
Well, the first part of the increase is Hudgens Creek, which has got to be in place to catch the business park.
Okay.
That's the first one.
Is it going to be more than the other one?
It's, we've estimated it to be about a 3.5. The southeast, probably 5 to 6 is where we're guessing.
Okay. And do you feel that it would be appropriate to possibly modify the plan of services to not put sewer in because it probably isn't needed at this time?
I think when we had our work session with the rate consultant, I, my suggestion was sort of to look at, we don't have a lot of calls and a lot of interest from that area. There's not a lot of development going on in that area, and if you wanted to try to modify the sewer rate increase, is look at changing the plan of services for that area, push it out a while, and then all, that sort of lets you delay some of that sewer increase for that project. You know, if you're going to still do it at some point, you're still going to have to pay for it.
And obviously, we're committed and we have to do that at some point. You know, we've had conversations even over the past seven years that, you know, there's still areas and pockets inside the city that I feel we have a moral obligation to sewer that still aren't, and then as these new ones come on, you know, there should be some priority for that, and I know you've tried to prioritize those things. My only point is to spend, as you said, five or six million dollars on a project that you may not even have anybody sign up on because of there's, a lot of them, the septic tanks are new enough and they're, that they won't be, so that they're not going to go to the expense of signing on. It just would seem that we could possibly save some money by doing that, and then if we start getting a need for that, that would certainly move up higher on the priority list to go ahead and do that. As I've said, I know that, obviously, if that project stays in there, this needs to be done at some point. You know, will it, kill it to wait six months or a year? I don't think so. And so I would just like for us to, as we've held the line on everything else, we've been very prudent with money, both taxpayer and utility money. I would just like to see us postpone this increase for at least six months or a year, and then start this process. I don't have a problem passing it, but delaying, having the start date later so that it is in place, and then possibly modify the plan of services at a future meeting after we hold a public hearing, and then possibly, you know, that could even change the parameters by which we could prioritize some future projects.
I had a question about plan of services. If we provide sewer to the right-of-way in front of a house, whether they connect or not, do they pay the sewer, they pay the sewer charges regardless of whether they...
Whether they connect or not. A lot of people don't.
Okay.
Because it's an...
So as the need comes about, that they would need it, say their septic system fails, then at that point, it would necessitate them connecting, but they can pay the sewer rate, they can pay the sewer rates if they choose not to connect, correct?
Yes, they would, they're required to pay, if it's in front of your house and you have access.
So when the actuary, actuary study was done, we all were at the meeting. It's my understanding that at the time, we were, there were two rate changes. One was a step higher than this one. This was kind of the median, and then there was a no, no rate change, which we knew we couldn't do. But during that period of time, we talked about the Hudgens Creek being a 3.5 million dollar project. We were supposed to hear about SRF funding, or not funding, I guess, principal forgiveness, of which that 1.4 million dollars was the pay-as-you-go system that read the first time. Did it take any consideration into that principal forgiveness amount or no?
The pay-as-you-go was just no SRF money.
Okay. So if we did get the 1.4 million dollars of principal forgiveness as related to SRF funding, which I think we've heard on since, correct?
That's what we're basing this recommendation on of doing that, and that was calculated in of us getting that money.
Okay. So that, this pay-as-you-go system did compensate for that SRF funding, that 1.4 million?
Well, the pay, we're not recommending the pay-as-you-go sewer option that we presented. There was two options we presented in the rate study. It was a pay-as-you-go. You bring the rates up immediately, quick, and level them out. If you had to pay the Hudgens Creek immediately, it pays you go. The other option we looked at was if we can get the SRF funding, borrow it, and then there's this caveat of getting that 1.4 million principal forgiveness, if we can get that, we had them calculate that, throw that in there, let's see what we'd have, the rates would have to come to. They've still got to get up three or four years down the road to a certain point. It's just how do you get to that point?
And I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is the 1.4 million dollar principal forgiveness that we've heard that we, we haven't gotten anything in writing, but we've heard we've gotten. That principal forgiveness does not impact us positively. We've already, we've already...
That's calculated in.
Anticipated that.
Yes.
Okay.
But getting to that point doesn't take into account the possibility that if we postpone that project, I mean, then obviously, we won't need to get to that as quick.
If you don't have to get to this point, then we're projecting, you know, then you're going to stay right down in here, so therefore, you don't have to raise the revenue to jerk this, to get the red lineup, the revenue lineup.
I mean, I don't have, if we've promised it and it's needed, I certainly feel obligated to do it, but if it's not needed and to run it in front of somebody's house, which then they will then be required to pay a fee on something they don't need, it seems even worse than waiting until it's actually needed and there's a large percentage of people there that need that or they're having problems, then go and do it as opposed to costing them more money when they don't even need it.
I know there's a new subdivision in the area, but there's a little pocket there at the interchange of 111 and, right there at that interchange, right below the wastewater plant. I know, I think it was Donnie Meadows' place. I know he's asked about it before. Not that I know that he was having problems, but I think it was interested to him to get some sewer into that interchange.
What are the obligations, though? If we've told somebody that we are going, if we have gone on record of saying that sewer will be in by 2015, what are the legal ramifications to trying to, I mean, it seems to me like when you say you're going to do something and definitely you're putting your word out there, but then trying to wriggle out of it, I don't know if that's a good word. I don't mean it that way, but, you know, trying to back out of it, what are the legal ramifications?
I think the city can legally change the plan, amend the plan of service, but, you know, you have that, like you say, moral obligation that you promise the people. I don't think you can reneg, but I think you can delay it. I think Mr. Mills has brought that up a time or two when we've had some discussions about other particular services, so it can be legally delayed.
And please, the wriggle out...
No, yeah, I didn't mean it.
Yeah. If I live in that neighborhood and I built a house four or five years ago, and my septic tank's going to be good for 15 or 20, I don't want you to put sewer in front of my house and me have to pay a sewer fee every month that I'm not going to tie on to because I'm not going to pay the expense to tie on to it and then have to pay the bill too. So that would be the only, you know, but if there's a need, obviously, I don't have a problem going ahead and doing it. I think that's where we need to arrive at at some point. Is there that need? Do we survey these people? Do we call them? Do we, whatever we do, and find out, is this a project, a priority project we need to go ahead and do?
Of course, I mean, you know, and I think some very valid points made, but, you know, as far as having that sewer there and not tying into it because your septic is good, it's bound to have some sort of a value increase on your property because at some point, that tank is going to fail, and so to know that, you know, and all the property around you is going to go up. I mean, it becomes more developable, does it not? I mean, you know, I'm not a big developer of land, but I would assume that by having that sewer there, that it creates an area, and, you know, I don't know if you can pull that slide up of looking at the landmass in those areas, but certainly looks like a place where there's going to be greater chances of residential development in the future. I don't know, we've got that land use plan going on, and, you know, maybe Mr. Mills can speak to where he anticipates there being more residential growth, but it looks like that may be an area where that could happen, in which case, would it not be better to have that sewer in the ground in four to five years versus waiting longer?
Would, if we were to delay and say that we would rethink about the sewer and water rates going up in January or February when everybody thinks that the economy is going to get better, how would that affect your future plans for money? I mean, you would lose revenue from July 1st to January.
It just depends on when it's implemented. I think this rate increase is going to generate around 700 and some thousand dollars projected.
Per year?
Per year.
For the first year?
For the first year.
Okay. So then that would bring that projection down about half if we were...
Yeah, and we sell a lot of water July, August, September, October, and then water sales sort of slack off again till next May. Depends on how hot it gets in May and June, you know, then water sales start going up.
What would be wrong with instituting this water sewer rate increase, but then find out later if we need to delay that plan of service so that we can start gathering this revenue? To me, these rate increases are on a very gradual incline, so it's not like it's gouging in your pocket all of a sudden and it's a large amount of money, and I think we need that revenue to, as you pointed out, maintain the infrastructure we have and add to it in our plant, water plant and so forth. So it seems to me that we need to get started on this rate increase, which I think is very moderate, and then maybe we can find out just how critical it is to either institute that, that area sewer there or maybe change that plan of service. Can we not do that a little bit later?
I guess that would be the question I would have, is if you delay the implementation of this rate increase to either January or February, how would that impact your ability to provide this plan of service timely on, in 2015?
You're just not going to generate, I mean, you're going to, we're still going to generate revenue, we're just not going to generate as much revenue. Things will change before 2014 or 13 when we start trying to do this construction, so it's hard to answer that question. There's a lot of different variables out there. You know, just straight line, there's, we're going to be short of our projections of half of that rate increase.
350,000 dollars.
350,000 dollars, and, you know, we're either not going to build it in your reserves and build your reserves up where we think we need to have them, and you're either going to stay short there, probably is what you will end up doing.
Last minute.
I'm sorry, we don't know the cost of, you know, what building materials will be. They could be up, they could be down.
Could be up, down.
How much do you have in your reserves now, seven point?
No. No. I don't know where that figure come from. I saw that, as of May 31st, we've got 4.4 million dollars.
Okay. So, and...
That's water and sewer.
Water, sewer, total.
And I, you know, I agree, depending on your level of use, whether, you know, it's a moderate increase or not. My point was, was bigger than that. My, my point was, was bigger than that, is, is that we, we've pretty much gone through and tried to hold the line on any increase of anything this year, and we've, we've done that except for this. And, so, that's where I came from, that if we could wait six months or a year to postpone this increase, go ahead and pass this and put the effective date being next budget cycle. That's, that's what I was looking to do. I'll, I'll make that in the form of, of an amendment to the motion, that we, that we pass this, but make the effective date, um, July 1 of, of 2010, um, if, if anyone would, would like to second that.
We have a motion to amend, uh, the effective date to July the 1st, 2010. Do we have a second?
You're talking about the rate increase?
The rate increase. Do we have a second? Seeing no second, motion to amend failed, now back to the original motion, um...
In, in speaking to the rate increase, after going through the meeting that we had with the consultants, and then also meeting again and going back through the paperwork today, uh, you know, I know that we have tried to be extremely frugal and very careful about our spending here in the city of Cookeville. And when I looked at the rate increase for my family, it wasn't that much. And I definitely would rather see us do it slowly over a period of time, rather than hit our consumers and our constituents and, uh, our customers with a, a rate increase that really is significant later on. And I know there's no prediction as to what things are gonna cost in 2015, or, um, those things. But, you know, my experience has been that things are, usually only get more expensive. And, um, I, I definitely like the feature of this, the, going to this system with, particularly with people who are conservative, being able to find a savings in it.
I think, uh, one of the things too, that, correct me if I'm wrong, over the next three years, if we change the plan of services, this is a three-year ordinance. So, we're, in essence, this one year, we're funding one project. Next year, we could be funding a second, uh, the second project we're talking about, of which can be modified if we decide to change the plan of services. So, as I look at this, we're making a, I'm looking at it, yes, we're making a three deer, a three-year commitment to a gradual increase, but if the plan of services changed, or something changes, and the requirements aren't what they are now, then we don't, we're not necessarily committing for this, uh, rate increase to happen in the next fiscal year, or the year after that. And so, I think by, by looking at it that way, I think it, for me, it just seems like it's better to, to look at this. This rate increase helps us get
Started.
Started through the next, the first project, which is the Hudgens Creek project, which is, there's no question as to whether it needs to be done. There's no question whether or not it, that plan of services needs to be modified. And I think over time, we'll, we'll see that it is a gradual progression. I think it's the best, uh, decision for us. And of course, you know, none of us wanted to raise any rates for anything, uh, but in this case, we're, we're doing pre-planning as it relates to things that happen in the future, and I think it's a good decision to do that. I think where it also is a benefit to our citizens are, there's 1,300 users on this list that will see a reduction. Most of those people are living single families, or retirement, retired couples, those kind of things, who aren't major users of water and sewer services, who are, we're paying more, they're actually gonna see their bill reduced, uh, with this plan, because we're getting rid of a minimum bill. And you pay for what you use. So, I think there's a lot of different reasons why, and, and, and I'm in agreement with Ricky. I don't, I don't think that we, we're not, we don't have to answer the question about plan of services for this annexation, that we've made a promise for 2015. I think we need to look at that, however, going forward, as it relates to the two increments after this, in the next three years.
Just, just one other point, I mean, as you can see on the, on these charts, the, we all know what the manufacturing segment is in right now. This is a six, $500 a year increase to, to the 66 industrial customers. $500 a month, or, I'm sorry, $500 a year, $1,500 over this three years. Again, I, I've said all along, I'm not saying we don't need it. I'm not trying to plan out in the future. I agree totally with every bit of that. I just think that this can be delayed. We're still setting it in place. It's just the point that we can stave off a, a taxing, a, a rate increase, which is, you can call it whatever you wanna call it, it's an increase, whether it's a tax increase or a rate increase, it's an increase, um, through this economic downturn, until, you know, people can better afford it, whether it's $5 a month, or $2 a month, or $40 a month. So, um, one final attempt, I'd make a motion to put it into effect January 1 instead of, uh, now. So, I'll make that in form of a motion, and then I'll hush.
All right, we have a motion to amend, uh, to make the effective date January 1, 2010. Do we have a second? Seeing no second, we return back to the original motion. Uh, do we have any further discussion on the original motion? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no comments, all vote.
Three yes votes, one no, motion carries.
About four yes.
I mean, four yes votes, one no, motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Um, item six, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading, ordinance 090609, providing a tax levy for the 2009, 2010 fiscal year. Sponsor, Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, uh, the tax rate for a fiscal year 09010 will be the 87 cents. Same tax rate as, uh, this previous current fiscal year that we're in. No, no increase at all, and I'd recommend your approval.
All right, do we have a motion, second to approve?
It's a move.
Second.
We have our motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item seven, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading, ordinance 0906010, authorizing appropriations for financial aid to public service, nonprofit and charitable organizations for the 2009, 2010 fiscal year. Sponsor, Mr. Mike Davidson.
Again, mayor and council members, this will appropriate money for the various organizations around town that the city helps support. Uh, there's been no increases for these, uh, nonprofits, um, over this current fiscal year. There's been no decreases either. We've been able to hold that funding the same, and I'd recommend your approval.
All right, do we have a mo- motion and a second to approve?
It's a move.
Second.
We have our motion, second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? I think we have, do we have, did you have a comment from Cityscape? Oh, okay. All right. Seeing no comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item eight, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading, ordinance 0906011, making appropriations for the various funds, departments and agencies of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee, for the 2009, 2010 fiscal year. Sponsor, Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, this, uh, ordinance does appropriate money for all the departments, all the funds, the hospital. Um, and there's been no changes since first reading. It is, uh, including the hospital's budget, it is a 352,569,000 dollar budget. Uh, I'd recommend your approval, and I'll answer any questions you might have, if you have any, since, uh, the first reading.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the budget?
It's a move.
Have our
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh, any comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Uh, we have a consent agenda with two items, item nine and 10, awarding bids for GPS survey equipment from the Public Works Department, and awarding bid for chemicals for Water Quality Control Department. Do we have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda?
It's a move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
New business, item 11, consider resolution 090607 relative to renaming the Cookeville Drama Center. Sponsor, Mr. Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's kinda hard for me to believe, and I'm sure it is you two, that the Drama Center's 30 years old this year.
Whoa, 30 years.
And, uh, we are nearing completion of a much-needed repairs and renovations. And as we look to rededicate the facility with, uh, new entryway and new lobby area, and, and look toward another productive 30 years and beyond that, it seems appropriate to consider changing the name to more accurately reflect the varied activities that occur there. And I offer this resolution for your consideration, which changes the name of the Drama Center to the Cookeville Performing Arts Center. And I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr.
There's a version of the sign that would be, uh, that might appear out front. We have to, um, change the sign, uh, we have some work to do on the sign anyway. Um, that's part of this, um, contract to, uh, renovate the Drama Center. So, there's a Cookeville Performing Arts Center is designed for the sign that might appear out front, if you so choose.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
It's a move.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion by the council?
Definitely, I think this will reflect more what we use that building for. And, um, I guess we're leaving out the police department, sorry, police department, but you've got your sign too. But, um, when I think about, uh, the quote-unquote Drama Center, I really think about all of the dance performances and musical things that happen there. And so, I think that kinda looks neat, and Mr. Shelton came up with CPAC, and so, Cookeville will have CPAC, and Nashville will have TPAC.
Will those be raised letters on, on there?
It, it's not raised leser, letters, it's an, um, interior lighted, this sign, so it's
That's right.
Um, basically cut out of the metal and then, uh,
Put across here.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
It, it's lit from behind.
Mm-hmm. Any further discussion by the council? Comments from the audience? Seeing enough of the comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Item 12, consider appointments to the new architectural design review board. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, uh, when we adopted ordinance 090404 in May, um, which established our architectural standards, the ordinance created an architectural design review board. The membership of the board consists of two members, of which are the, are planning commission members and three citizens at large, one of which should be an architect. All are recommended to be residents of Cookeville. The term of membership is three years, except for the representatives of the planning commission, whose terms run concurrently with their membership on the planning commission. The planning department recommends for the appointment of the following people for service on the board. Randy Dalton is representative of the planning commission. Aaron Bernhardt is a representative of the planning commission. Peter Metz is a citizen at large and an architect. Kay Starkweather and Ellie Lenhart.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second to approve these, uh, these, these members to the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have our motion, second. Any discussion by the council?
And they all wanna serve.
They've all been contacted and agreed to serve.
As of now.
Three-year sentence, huh? All right, uh, any further discussion by the council? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item 13, consider awarding contract to Allman Engineering for the design of a bridge over Kane Creek on Minelet Creek Road. Sponsor, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, uh, there's a bridge on the Minelet Creek Road over Kane Creek that's deteriorated to the point it needs to be replaced. Uh, we requested qualifications from engineering firms and determined that Allman Engineering would be the best, uh, for this. So, we negotiated, negotiated, uh, a fee of, uh, a minimum of $20,000, or 15% of the total construction cost. And I would recommend your approval.
All right, do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing no discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Consider, item 14, consider reappointment to the environmental appeals board. Sponsor, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, uh, Patrick's rank term on the board has expired, and he's agreed to serve another five-year term, and I would recommend your approval.
All right, do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have our motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Item 15, consider declaring a surplus, the propane air plant with the Cookeville Gas Department. Sponsor, Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, this is a, an item I spoke to you about briefly at one of our budget work sessions. Over on 15th Street, we have our propane air plant. It's a, uh, basically, it's got seven, uh, 70,000 gallon propane tanks. Those tanks do have propane in them right now, and the facility, facility there has some additional equipment with it. And this system was stall, was installed back in the 60s, and we haven't actually used it, uh, in a peak shaving capacity, to kinda curtail, uh, when we were about to reach our peak capacity. We've been able, over the years, to increase contracts, so that we have, uh, sufficient capacity coming forward, uh, into Cookeville. And this system, we haven't used it in 10 years, and we don't think there's a need for it going forward. If you look at our growth of our system, and you look at what our contracts have, we have, uh, we believe sufficient, uh, contracts for the next 10 years, uh, based on our growth right now, within our, our gas system. And I would recommend that we declare this surplus, and I would, um, like to start that process this summer, to take bids, to have, uh, companies come in here and decommission that, and take that, uh, all the equipment, uh, basically out of here.
All right. Do we, do we have a motion and a second to approve?
It's a move.
Second.
We have our motion and a second. Any, let me, any discussion by the council?
How much property is that, where, where that sits?
That property is a little over, I think it's about one and a half acres, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, we do have an anode, uh, bed, I've been told, buried out there somewhere, which helps with the protection of the gas system. So, we would have to retain that property for that purpose. It's buried in there somewhere, I'm not exactly sure where it's at. But we would have to, we would have to keep the property.
We're only declaring the, the assets.
The tanks, the, the assets, the tanks, uh, the equipment, this is just some of the equipment there. Uh, that's the, the building, we'd leave that building there for now. But basically, everything, the tanks, uh, this device, this equipment, uh, remove all that, take it down to street level, get all the piping, uh, back below street level. And, uh, we'd also sell the, the, I think there's about 70,000 gallons of propane in those tanks, and we would, uh, looking at bidding those separate, and there might be some local propane dealers that might be interested in purchasing that. So, we're gonna try to bid those two items out separate, the propane and then all the equipment, as a separate item.
Very good.
You're still willing to let us put some recycling bins out there?
Yeah. New recycling center, sounds good.
Good.
Any further discussion by the council? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item 16, consider contract to expand scope of services with Cannon and Cannon for the design of the West Cemetery Road Extension. Sponsor, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, um, we contracted with Cannon and Cannon to provide, uh, engineering plans, uh, to build this road. Uh, at the time, we intended to use, uh, in-house forces to build it. Uh, as you know, the school project was delayed, uh, as they rebuild it, or rebid it. And we, the same engineering firm is doing the civil work on the school, as well as the road. So, they have been working on redesigning the, the school. So, we still have not got the, the final designs for the road. We will be getting them in a few weeks, but we intended to hopefully start before now. And they're, uh, must my understand that their plan is to still open school up in August of 2010. And if we start, uh, work on the road in August or September this year, I'm not sure our forces would be able to finish the road by the time school started. So, we, uh, talked to Cannon and Cannon, and they agreed to modify their contract to, uh, increase the scope of their services, to have a set of plans and specs suitable for bidding. And that amount was for 15,500, and I would recommend your approval.
All right, do we have a motion and a second to approve?
It's a move.
Second.
We have our motion and a second, discussion by the council. Seeing no discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. At this time, we have our hearing of citizens and door delegations, and we invite you to come to our meetings and share your ideas and concerns about the things happening here in the city of Cookeville. Um, do we have anyone that'd like to speak? You've got up to three minutes, and I'll also open up the floor to the council.
Yeah, I would like to, uh, thank the mayor and council for, uh, their support of my family over the last couple of weeks. I was unable to be here at the last city council meeting, uh, because we had a death in our family. But the council and, uh, and the city employees were a, a great blessing to, uh, my wife and I, as her father went on to be with the Lord. And I just wanted to take the time to, uh, thank you guys publicly for your prayers and support. And like to thank Cancer Treatment Center and all the staff at the hospital, for what a, what a blessing we have. I tell people, you know, $80 million is a big amount of money to spend on a new hospital, but I will say that all that money would be wasted if it weren't good people. And, uh, we have good people at our hospital, and they care for people and families like mine on a regular basis, and they are to be commended.
commended, and, and I'd like to thank them for their service, and, uh, it's a very difficult job, but we're very thankful to have such good people, so, thank you all again.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to make a short comment about the TML conference that I attended this past weekend, and, um, one of the good things about going out of town to be with other municipalities and, um, other communities is, is to hear the good reputation that Cookeville has, and so many of the programs that they featured, we already implement, and we already are trying to do that, we're very forward-thinking here in Cookeville, and, um, I continually got the same two comments from everyone when they'd see my name and see that I was from Cookeville, the first one was, hey, you guys got the T double S double A, and I, um, made a point to let them know that that was a whole community effort, that it was the chamber, the county, the city, and TTU, and the other comment that I got, and I think this is a, a good comment for Cookeville, is since I was the only representative there, everybody just assumed it was because Jim Shipley was too cheap to send anybody else, and, uh, that was overall, so, uh, Mr. Shipley has a reputation across the state of Tennessee of being an extremely frugal person.
Aren't we lucky?
Yes, we are.
Very good, do we have any other comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we'll see you...
Everybody who...